Lifetime readiness by providing opportunity, achievement, and community for all. So on that note, I will call of order the Board of Education meeting for Monday, January 27th. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Right, Mr. Donovan, are you aware of anything we need to adjust on the agenda?
Uh, there is no change to the agenda. I move to approve the agenda presented.
Second.
Rick's motion is seconded by Jennifer to approve our agenda the way that it is presented. Folks have questions at all? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Uh, the minutes from our previous meeting have been included for your pleasure in ord docs.
I move to approve the minutes for the regular meeting call on January 8th, 2024, as presented.
Second. And that's motion seconded by Ed to approve our previous meeting minutes.
I just noticed it should say 25.
Yeah, exactly. You have to do it.
I'll do a second.
Twenty twenty five, I missed that too.
Little typo.
Yeah.
In the recommended action there. It's correct on the actual minutes.
Oh, got it.
It's just a typo up there, so no biggie. Any other questions? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We are good on that. And of course vouchers follow.
I'll move to approve general checking account vouchers, totally $1,094,176.41 as presented.
I'll second that.
John's motion seconded by Rick to approve our checking account vouchers in the number just enumerated. Does anyone have questions on the vouchers? I don't see any, so all of those in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? And a thank you, that is also approved. And now, one of my favorite parts of our meeting, at least the one at the end of the month, uh, we would love to hear from our student council reps, and it looks like Max to join us first.
All accounts of children's school, sir. Alright, so, uh, Milton High School, as students will be participating in the Polar Plunge, where Special Olympics has coming up, uh, not too far from now, um, students that would like to participate, we ask to raise a hundred dollars that will go towards uh, Special Olympics and similar activities. Um, that also lasts our February 10th through the 14th, Winter Spirit Week, that will be happening at the high school, where we'll have a series of dress-up days and assemblies, and then, um, at those assemblies, we'll have some activities, some of them will have some special athletes, so some Special Olympics, what we're gonna call it, and then some of them, basically, we're just gonna have students play some games during the flex period, so it sounds pretty fun. And then, um, last Sunday, at 8:00 in the morning, we had some, about forty high school students, maybe a little under that, that came to high school and to the commons, where we package meals, uh, for kids against hunger, we packaged 17,448 meals in about two hours, and about a third of those meals will stay in the United States, and about two-thirds of those meals will, uh, be, um, international meals for people who set part of their food. And through that, we raised about $2,000 for various community organizations and from student donations, and that was how we funded that, and, uh, any questions, Anthony?
Thank you. Excellent. Thank you, Max. Good job, Ed. Okay, following the student council report on our agenda, this is public comment, I picked up the sheets in the back, and no one had signed up to visit with us, so we will roll past that. That takes us to superintendent update, the first part of which is Red Hawk Highlights, Rich.
Yeah, we will have our principals and directors come up and highlight things that are happening at each of our schools or departments.
Well, sir.
Whoever wants to go first, can you go ahead?
Good evening. In the 4K through 3rd grade world, we just wrapped up, and Northside too, wrapped up for semester, so we, as a district, are on trimesters, but we do our grading periods at the K6 level by semester, so two report cards a year, and so those were posted in family access for families just today at Fort Lock, so families are all reading report cards tonight, and, um, that's a big undertaking, so thank you to the staff for their dedication, really making personalized comments that really help families learn more about their learners. Um, we, to give you an update, last time we spoke about the Act 20, all of the reading testing that the reading department was supporting our teachers with, and how, uh, we had them develop individual reading plans, and that is all kind of, we're through that first hump now, again, the last school to test was Milton East, and that wrapped up last week, and so, um, that was a big undertaking, again, another shout-out to our coaches and to Julie Musgrove and her team for really getting that going. Um, I think we all learned a lot, and I think it's just gonna get smoother from here on out. Um, and then, you know, it's wintertime, so we are all, um, just praying for above zero wind chills every day at the 4K 3 world, we didn't have any of those last week, so a lot of indoor recess, a lot of, um, cabin fever happening, but we do our best to keep the kids, um, engaged and get their wiggles out in other ways, and we're excited about the weather this week, so, thank you.
Right. At the high school, lots going on, uh, we had our, uh, the academic awards breakfast, uh, thank you, I think, for attending, it was honoring all our students that are receiving academic letters and, uh, the bars that went after that for a number of trimesters at high honors, we had a wonderful attendance there, we filled the whole cabin area. Uh, we had a very, very successful show for our parents, put on a very successful invitation, one of the largest we've had, uh, there are twenty-four different choirs, plus our own two, uh, that performed, I have not seen that, uh, facility as spilt as it has been outside of graduation, uh, for the awards that night, uh, they just, the parents, uh, and all volunteers put on an outstanding show, choir's doing quite well, they actually were point seven points away from, uh, the, uh, finals, uh, in Sauk Prairie this last weekend, which is a very, was a very, very, very competitive show, uh, so they were very proud of, uh, how they're doing. Uh, the, uh, arena scheduling, we'll be starting next week, today in homerooms, we went through, uh, course selection processes, uh, with all of our students and how to send them for classes. So next week, uh, all current juniors will be creating their schedules, they have, you know, get the master schedule, and they'll create their schedule, the week scheduling, the sophomores to follow, the freshmen to follow, and then the eighth graders that picked their courses already, and we'll schedule them after the current freshman catch-up. Uh, and then finally, last week, we did have Pioneer Future Beyond, the first event was Wednesday night, uh, the snow that surprised Oregon, which we weren't exactly expecting, uh, um, maybe kept some people home, they didn't necessarily have their murder of people there we were to vote for, but I got a lot of positive feedback, uh, as parents and students learned about, uh, both navigating the high school, running about various careers and those courses that helped them to prepare or explore those careers, and we're all looking to build upon what we might miss here.
Awesome, Mike. Northside, last week, we had our third and final, um, Culvers Night, which is always a popular event, at least in the elementary and in Northside, uh, it's a perfect opportunity for staff to do some volunteering, but then also to see, um, students interact outside of the school day, in a small area, so, interesting. Um, we also, uh, last week, actually two weeks ago, our 4th graders, um, had a field trip up to the state capitol, um, that's always a great opportunity for kids who have never been inside a, a big place like that, that came back with lots of good stories. And then, last week, report cards for Northside, we went out to families this evening, um, and our staff has worked super hard, right, so shout-out to the staff at Northside to get those comments and those grades and, uh, tech to communicate with families. That's it.
Hello, at the middle school, um, our forensic team is small but mighty, so there are seven students on the team, we hosted a meet a week and a half ago, and did a really great job both hosting and, um, improving on their pieces, so we're happy with our forensic team. We are, similar to what Max was saying, uh, fundraising for the Polar Plunge, and our unity team is doing lots of little unique things, both with students and with staff to raise money for the Polar Plunge. Um, I've learned a tip last week, that it's been over $50,000 that have been donated from the middle school over the years for the Polar Plunge. And then, finally, we've been analyzing our winter eye-ready data, and for the first time since I have been an administrator at the middle school, both reading and math in both grade levels are in the high performance, high growth quadrants, and it's just really exciting, uh, progress moving forward. The goal is always to shrink the red and grow the green, and that happened in all four areas, so very proud of our students and staff for the progress we're making with our eye-ready diagnostic results.
Hi, I just wanted to give you an update on our PD on Monday, so, uh, it was one that I helped lead, we do two district live PD sessions outside of those three days in August, and this one was all around mental health. And we had eight breakout sessions in the morning, um, with different presenters around the area, um, with different mental health-related topics, so trauma, um, challenging behaviors, um, youth, um, suicide, um, there was mindfulness, drug, drug misuse in Milton specifically with some of our PD and SRO. So it was a wonderful day of learning, our afternoon was, um, kind of a keynote from Dr. Dana Bolesky, who is, um, somebody that we contracted with this year, great feedback from the staff, a lot of learning, um, a lot of, um, a lot of shout-outs for just, um, a variety of options to choose from, all these breakout sessions were paid for by our mental health funds that we had had the last two years, and, um, hopefully that continues, but, um, one never knows. So I just wanted to let you know that it was a great day of learning, and, um, the staff is, is grateful for, for that support, so, thank you.
There's one thing that I wanted to highlight, and it just came out today, and I heard bad conversations about this topic earlier, but if you recall, a, a, uh, state judge had overturned the Act 10, um, and today that judge, that same judge came out and issued a stay on the decision to overturn it until, uh, it's had a chance to go through the appellate and/or the state Supreme Court, and, and in their, uh, comments, it talked about, with the uncertainty of whether his ruling, his previous ruling, would survive, uh, the appeal process, uh, he didn't want school districts and employee groups to go through, uh, negotiations or involving things that are prohibited by Act 10, just to have to go back, if it was appealed and overturned, to have to go back and undo those things. So the status on that right now is that, um, the school districts are supposed to proceed as if Act 10 is still in place until, um, the appellate court and/or the state Supreme Court rules, and I guess not just school districts, but municipalities also. And then the other item in the superintendent's update is, uh, the State School Board Association Conference, I'll kind of kick things off, uh, just, uh, that took place last week in Milwaukee, uh, we've had some folks from the school board go to it each of the years that I've been here, other than the one year when it was canceled, and, uh, this is the first year that every single board member was able to attend, uh, for at least a portion or even all of the, of the different days, and I think that shines a really positive light on our school board as a group and on our individual board members, uh, their ability to take time to continue to hone their skills as board members, communicate and stay, and outreach to other school boards from across the state, uh, and what we've done in the past, and our first board meeting after that, is had each board member share a, a couple highlights that they had, uh, from the sessions, and I, I can go first, just to kick it off, and then we don't have to circle back to me. Um, I, I attended a number of different sessions throughout the conference, including three different keynote speakers, um, but some highlights were some sessions on retaining and attracting high-quality staff, um, on school safety, and a few things that I want to highlight from a couple different sessions on school safety, there was a lot of discussion about both what, what the presenter described as reactive measures, is how you respond if something happens, and those things are important, and it might be, uh, how you address your physical space, uh, how you partner with law enforcement, what, how you communicate with families if there is, uh, some type of incident, but they also talked a lot about the importance of, um, proactive measures, and their key was, uh, the importance of building positive climate and making sure that each student at each of your schools has an adult that they trust in and knows that cares about them, uh, both to have them have that sense of belonging, but also, uh, someone that they would feel comfortable reporting something to if they, if they hear something, so, uh, it really reinforced a lot of the things that we're doing as a school district. Uh, and then the one other topic that I had a couple different sessions on was around school funding and upcoming, uh, the upcoming state legislative session, and some keynotes from that, uh, were, uh, some hope that the upcoming legislative session will create more uniform funding across districts to try to eliminate some of that, uh, situation that we have right now with have-and-have-not school districts across the state, um, hopefully an increase in funding for special education. Currently, uh, the state reimburses about thirty-one percent of, uh, each school district's, uh, special education costs, uh, there's a proposal to up that to sixty percent, which would still leave, uh, the school district responsible for a large portion of that cost, but would go a long way both towards, uh, helping that uniformity across the state, but also reducing some of the stress on the overall budget by having more, uh, more of that reimbursement from the state. Uh, and then the other was, it's just a reminder that there'll be an opportunity for school board members and administrators to meet with, uh, local area legislators, uh, the governor's budget proposal comes out on February 18th, so they're recommending that sometime between, uh, February 18th, when the government's, uh, budget proposal for the coming year comes out, and the middle to late March, that either through formal, um, opportunities to go to the Capitol, a Capitol Day, or by outreach, either individually for school districts or in partnership with some neighboring districts, uh, to make sure that we're talking to our area legislators about the, the things that are important for us in the upcoming legislative session.
Excellent. I'll go next, um, and, uh, share with you, Rich, a little undersold, uh, the, the attendance that Milton had there, and just to give you a little bit of a, of a snapshot, of course, this is the annual education convention for the state of Wisconsin, it is jointly sponsored by the three different groups, WAS, pardon the acronym soup here, but it's part and parcel of it, WASBEE is the Association of School Boards, WASDA is the district administrators at, at the state level, all four hundred and twenty of them or whatever, and WASBO are the business officials, Ross and his counterparts in all respective districts, so those three organizations kind of jointly sponsor this, so, um, as I was working through the, the different kinds I had down there, uh, I shared with some folks that our entire board was there, our business official and our administrator, I ran into no other districts that had that. Um, you know, I was incredibly proud of, of all of us that, that made the effort, and, um, just hats off to the, to the time and effort that all of your board, uh, puts into that particular event, so, uh, I could share with you, I was a busy boy, um, I hosted my own breakout session down in, down in Milwaukee, it was a bit of an evolution of a process, and I think we hinted at it, but, uh, by doing so, I was catching bits and pieces of a bunch of different breakouts as I prepared for the one that I led, uh, that was around, uh, creating peer groups, working groups, wherever we tagged them, of board presidents, and I had an audience of sixty, probably, I would guess, in that room, um, and, uh, Rich was able to stop in for a few minutes and, uh, kind of add to what I had shared with the folks, and, um, it, it is an enthusiastic idea, and it met with, uh, an incredibly warm reception, and I think it will grow into something that, uh, is very, very meaningful, so, that was my, my busyness, I guess, at this year's convention. Other folks, if you wanted, you don't have to give us a minute-by-minute of what you did there, but give us, give us a couple takeaways of things that, uh, were important, and let's do it somewhat sequential, so Jen, I'm gonna make you go first.
Sure, that's just fine. Uh, so I was at the conference for two full days, and I was able to hit a number of the categories of the breakout sessions, so, um, there was advocacy, community engagement, uh, leadership, school finance, human resources, facilities, um, and, uh, student achievement. Uh, I focused heavily on human resources, because again, I serve on that committee, and I feel like the district has some challenges, obviously, um, you know, that we're gonna face as it relates to the cost of health insurance, and so I did go to, um, a couple of different breakout sessions on, um, again, the cost of healthcare, and then I focused also heavily on the marketing piece of things, and, um, so I heard from, uh, the school district of Lodi, they did a nice presentation, again, on what they're doing on their social media site, and then, um, the third one that I want to highlight is, um, the AI, so I, I did go to the AI session, and I know some of my colleagues did as well, uh, that was by far the most informative of the sessions that I attended, just because, um, I don't know what I don't know, and, uh, I learned a lot, and so I'm really excited actually to start kind of diving into what, what is the district doing, what is our policy, and how can we move forward and really embrace it as opposed to be fearful of it.
Uh, I was there for two days as well, uh, two full days, um, I had some great sessions like Jen, I, I kind of gravitated towards the HR benefit, uh, employee-staff side of things, um, one of the key takeaways that I had that I wrote down and I've circled, and I think about it every day since I've been back, but, uh, competition of ideas, so not just having a, a plan, um, but trying to get some competing ideas from the board and the staff as far as what we do and how we do it, and, you know, kind of the, the best idea win type thing, um, so that was a key takeaway on some of that stuff. I did a school safety session, uh, and I took away from that, uh, just, uh, a sense of peace knowing that we do have a great plan, um, so Carrie, nice job on that. Um, the, uh, the other thing I wrote down, the opening session, kind of the theme was, uh, tell me something good, I think we do this, well, we just did it a little bit ago, so, you know, celebrating our victories here in the district at the individual schools, and making sure we do that more, whether it's at a board-level meeting or in a full conversation, or, I think his comparison was, instead of saying, "Good morning, how are you?", "Good morning, tell me something good", so, just a great way to start the day in a meeting or whatever it may be. Um, and then lastly, the other thing that was, I thoroughly enjoyed, was the conversations with other board members across the state, uh, getting their perspective, their ideas, how are they doing things, the same challenges, different challenges, so, um, those are always good conversations that I enjoy as well, so.
First of all, I just wanted to thank the district for the opportunity to attend. Um, I attended a session entitled Future-Focused Career Readiness, um, the panel spoke about how we need to move beyond teaching just facts and content, um, it stressed the importance of teaching skills such as critical thinking, collaboration, and time management, basically a lot of the things that we already have in our boardroom and reg with. Um, I did learn that we were one of, I think, few districts who have something like this, a lot of districts are working on it, um, but I think we're, uh, well in front when it comes to things like this. I also attended a session put on by the WIAA, I learned that the WIAA is a private, not-for-profit organization, I always thought it was just something, part of DPI or something, um, they spoke a little bit about how the organization works, and how and why rules changes take place in different sports. They also spoke a little, um, a lot of the attendees were interested in the public versus private issues that are so often talked about, um, in sports, um, and what they do to try to obtain a kind of a balance for all the student athletes, basically, there is no simple answer to that, um, so it kind of got off the beaten track a little bit, because everyone had, you know, trying to root for their own school, and, and that's fine, you know, that's what they're there for, so, um, I also just enjoyed having the opportunity to spend time with my fellow board members outside of, you know, more formal settings, so, well, thanks for that.
So, as the newest board member here, I tried to attend, uh, sessions that focused on my committees, which are policy and finance, so I attended both of the AI sessions, there was one, one that really focused in on policy and what we had, and we talked a lot about what we do, lots of districts have policy around students, but they also talked about policy around HR and budget and a bunch of other things, and how AI impacts that, and then also went to the AI one with, um, Milwaukee School District, where the cap, they're using it to support teachers in what they call taking vision off the plate, and that was just really interesting to think about, especially as we've been talking a lot about technology at the board level. Um, I also went to the one that's either security, and that's, of course, always interesting to talk through those plans and policies. And the finance ones, it was, it was always, I'm the person who's always early, and so I never knew who was in the back of the room, and I always tried to sit in the front because I can't see great, and there were many times where all of a sudden, a Ross would be whispering, because he would watch, I'd be taking notes and circling the things that I thought, "Oh, we don't do that", and all of a sudden, there'd be Ross, "Dude!". So, anyway, I learned a lot, and I was glad to have Ross nearby to help me, um, because they talked about accountability and changes to the, you know, state funding, and then finally, I went to the new board member networking event, which was really helpful to meet and talk to a lot of new board members and WASBEE personnel who help support the new board members, so. I was there all three days, and I'm glad I did that, because it was really fun.
Um, at the risk of sounding rude, and I'm kind of recap what I did too, but, uh, I just wanted to thank Chelsea and Rich, Milwaukee downtown is not a lot of fun, and good instructions, everything was booked properly, we was easy in, easy out, very, I'm very appreciative, so thank you for everything that very simple for us. I went for two days as well, um, some of the highlights, some of the sessions I saw was, the first one was on, on conducting a student survey, or a community survey, which we do here, uh, it turned out to be a little bit of a, um, advertisement for a vendor that does that, but it was also really good to hear that, that, you know, this paid solution was very similar to what we do here, and getting a lot of those same results, and so it was reaffirming that we're doing some of the right things in that, in that arena. Um, I represented the district in the delegate vote for policies for WASBEE, WASBEE, you know, you're asking me, right? So my whole first day was just about tying up doing that, that did forever, in a day. It was good to hear what, uh, the school board association is wanting to push forward starts policy and be in tune with that, and hear what changes they were looking to put in, put in place. And then, uh, I met, I will, I also saw Dennis Pauls' talk in, I'm sure if you've ever heard the Myers-Briggs color analysis wheel leadership, he kind of had a spin on that, that was kind of fun to hear, and then in that, I went to, um, state, some of the state law that's being introduced, and that was, uh, a mild minute, it was super fast, it was hard to keep up, we know, we know that, and said, "All right, I'll give you a quick notes, because I can't write it down fast enough." Um, so then Shane Lewis comes to us and says, "Hey, this is coming up", and it's been like, "Oh yeah, I think I've heard of that before." So, again, it was a really good day, and I would say that lastly, probably my favorite thing is the things that happen in between the sessions, um, a lot of great work happens, a lot of great discussions, bumping into board members, the whole ex-colleagues, um, people that you just admired for a while and working with the rest of the board, uh, we had some great conversation after hours, and that was probably as valuable as it's probably gonna be.
Yeah, we could, we don't want to leave Ross out, if Ross can give a quick, uh, update on his experiences last week.
Sure, I'll keep my brief, because I know Rich covered a lot of the financial policies and agenda items for the WASBEE groups, but, um, it's very nice to hear that, uh, a lot of the agendas for WASBEE, WASBO, and WASDA are secondary learning, um, and yes, I did see some of the sessions, which is great to be part of, and I promise I did not say that out personally, you sat in front of me, was my responsibility, but, um, yes, uh, there are a lot of budget priorities that we've heard before coming out for the proposed 25, 27 budget, we won't know some solid information until the governor's proposal comes out, response to the state admin responses, the biggest four pushes that we're gonna hear about are increase of special education aid, not just in amount, but in the appropriation type, uh, we've heard we talked in the past about some certain versus some sufficient, uh, we've been living under some certain appropriation for far too long, and even in the current budget, we find ourselves in, uh, DPI is already predicting some loss in that percentage reimbursement from the current year, which we're gonna be addressing at upcoming finance committee meeting as well. Uh, beyond that, we still have some confusion over the $325 per pupil, if that's going to survive the court battles, it's currently, and now, the budget priorities are asking for far beyond the $325 plus points, um, 415 and 430, where numbers cost around at the convention quite a bit for the two, next two years, in addition to a hundred-dollar increases per people aid in at least the first year, next by any, um, aside from that, there's a lot of talk about the low revenue ceiling and what could change the next state budgets, I'll be watching that very closely as it might, um, have something to do with our recent referendum. Uh, it also highlighted some of the disparities that still live within the state of Wisconsin, we still have districts who had not passed referendum that are still below the low revenue ceiling, the lowest district in the state right now is $10,523, and the highest is $24,949 per pupil, so we still have a long way to go in the state for not only funding equity, but just overall consistency of educational program, but, yes, it's a very good convention, I'm glad I got to see most of these at one point, so, thanks.
Yeah, and not to miss, Tracy can't join us tonight, but of course, but Tracy was there on Wednesday and, um, engaged in a bunch of different sessions, and I think, And I think she wasn't able to go a year ago, so it was her first, like it was a net. And she shared with me how valuable that is to interact with, not only just with each other, but you've got to understand there's 2,000 people there that all do the same thing that we're doing. So it's very valuable to bump into somebody that's either a board member or a superintendent or a business official. And you kind of can share quickly what they're doing, what you're doing, et cetera. So thank you to everyone that made the effort. All right, we'll call that good and move on. And next, we have a presentation and I will invite Wei Meng up to the podium here. Wei is from Johnson and Block. And this is a very normal or routine thing that we do is an audit, right, of our previous year's budget. Once the numbers are finalized and whatnot, we have an outside firm that wades through all of that and just gives us the confidence that we are meeting the benchmarks and or categorizing things the way that they need to be and so forth. So Ms. Wei, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Thank you for having me here today to present the audit. My name is Quai Hong. I'm an audit manager with Johnson and Block. Today I will briefly go over this financial statements highlights with you. Please feel free to jump in if you have any questions, okay? So the first page of this gives you what it was included in the audit report. So in the audit report, after the table of content, you will find our independent auditor's report. This is the report that we as auditors issued providing opinion on the financial statements. Our report issued an unmodified opinion, which means we feel that the financial statements are presented fairly in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the USA. And it is free of material misstatement. So after that is the management's discussion and analysis, which provides additional narrative and supports the financial statements from management perspective. Then we have couple sets of financial statements. First is the government-wide financial statements. It is more like a consolidated look at the financial statements reported by the different categories of governmental and business-type activities. Then we have fund financial statements, which provides the detail on each of the district's major fund. It is providing the information, the self-balancing of individual fund. Then we have the notes to the financial statements. It provides summary of significant accounting policies of the district. And then it includes the footnote disclosure related to significant financial statement accounts, which include cash, debt, capital assets, and some other disclosures that are required. Then we have the required, sorry, it's the, I will get it right. Then we have the required supplementary, sorry, it's still, I'm still on page one. So yeah, sorry, at the bottom of the page one. We have required supplementary information and other supplementary information. So for required supplementary information, it includes the budgetary comparison for general and special education fund, the Wisconsin retirement system schedules, OPAP schedules. And then for the supplementary information, it includes non-major fund statements. After the financial statements, we also have a single audit report. On page two, part of the audit, annual audit process, we are also required to, by the DPI, to certify district's numbers. So this includes A certification and fund balance certification that was submitted by us in September of 2024. As part of the single audit submission, we certify the single audit report to the federal claimer house in January of 2025. So additionally issued with our audit report annually is the communication packet that includes a required communication to the governing body and layers of recommendations. The required communication to governing body is standard communication. And for the comments that we discussed with the management, including reviewing our fixed asset schedules, reviewing the district's capitalization policy as it relates to the dollar threshold used for capitalizing assets, as well as summarizing the new government accounting standard guidelines, which is GATB 101 related to the compensated absences. As this standard will significantly change the approach to estimate the compensated absence. Then we are going to page three. It is the financial highlights for the district's fiscal year ended 2024. On this page, you will see a condensed version of the general fund balance sheet. The general fund is the main operating fund of the district. And under the financial reporting, it also includes the special education fund. So the total assets for the general fund is $15,936,000. It includes cash, tax receivables, and other assets. And then the total liabilities the district has as end of the 2024 is 3.9 million. It includes the current liability, which include accounts, cables, and group payrolls. The district does not have any short-term debt as the end of 2024. And then the fund balance the district has, which is the total assets minus the total liabilities, is about 12 million at the end of the year. In the middle of page three is the detail of general fund balance. You can see it is broken down into four categories. So this is page, middle of page three. It includes non-spendable fund balance, restricted fund balance, committed fund balance, and unassigned fund balance. We also calculated an unassigned general fund balance to the subsequent year general fund budget, which we got about 22%. And that is very comparable to last year, which is 20%. At the bottom of page three is the condensed version of budget to actual. You budgeted no change to fund balance, but the actual number showed up about 914,000 increase of fund balance for the year of 2024. Page four, page four includes detailed expenditures that are over budgeted for general fund and special education fund. But in total, general fund expenditures were under budget by about 1 million. And special education fund expenditures were under budget by 112,000. So page five lists the district's other fund, fund balance. It includes the special revenue funds, capital projects fund, debt service fund, and food service fund. So here, the audit financial statements are on a full accrual basis for food service fund. So which is different than the day-to-day books of the district for food service fund. And this numbers is from the audit financial statements under full accrual basis. Page six gives you the historical information on the district's general obligation debt versus its capacity. Under state statute, the district is allowed to borrow up to 10% of the equalized value of the district's limit in general obligation debt. And you can see that the general obligation debt limit has increased from 2020 to 2024. But the district's, district's general obligation debt keeps consistent for the last five years. Page seven, like the following pages give you the financial trends of general fund, including special, special education fund and debt service fund as relates to the total expenditures and total revenues by category. So page seven gives you the expenditures by category for the last five years. And page eight derived from the same information, but in a pie chart. Page nine provides the last five years of revenues for general fund, including special education fund. And then page 10, the same information, but in pie chart for the general fund revenues. So the last page of this summary has the net cost of governmental activities by function of programs. This table report each activity's net cost. The net cost represents the amounts financed by taxpayers and general state aid. This information was taken from page two of the audit report. So that's pretty much what I want to cover today. Do you have any questions?
Quick question on page six, the bottom of page six. You had said that the, the general obligation debt limit has increased the last five years. But our, and that's right, the question is, you said, well, we actually go to the taxpayers has stayed pretty level?
Yeah, you, outstanding general obligation debt is pretty stable. So you can see the general obligation that you have for the end of 2024 is about 45 million, which is about 15% of your capacity. So you still have a liability.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
So does that?
Yeah, yeah.
Anybody else? Once again, thorough as usual. Thank you, thank you for that.
It's a clean audit. Thank you for everyone. Thank you for Ross and. Yeah, it is a clean audit. Thank you very much. Thank you. Have a good night.
Yes, thank you. All right. All right, we will move on and after the presentation. Next, we have a joint committee and tech, I'm sorry, joint curriculum and tech committee report. Jennifer and Ed, and I did not ask who's going to kick this off.
Yep, Ed's going to do that.
Okay.
I was unable to make this meeting.
Okay, so we're going to start with Ed. I think we're going to have Neil and Jeremy available to augment. So take it away, Mr. Smalls.
Sure, we're going to go tag team back and forth. So any more, I feel, finding three documents, one of the slides that were presented to us in that meeting last Monday night. And also a series of 27 questions that were submitted from board members in response to us. I would encourage you to read those and go over all of that. But rather than go through all that right now, there was a nice little compact memo that we're going to go through. And I should mention within the meeting was myself, Tracy and Rick from tech committee. And then also joining us was Adat in that meeting. So with that, I think we're going to start with a history and timeline in the memo. Is that the first item?
Oh yeah, just, just a real quick overview too. So the, again, the purpose of the meeting was to, as we are administrations, the team is beginning, I'm. As administration is beginning to put together its recommendations for the high school. Just real quick background, it's fact that, you know, it's been 10 years we've had the MacBook at the, at the high school level. And, and the decision was made this year that, you know, the, we, a lot of decisions, a lot of work went into choosing the MacBook in the first place. We have not visited, is this the best device? Is this the device we want moving forward? We've been having this deep of conversation. So this, here so far, we've had a lot of conversations. And so as both for the Chromebook pilot and as we start making recommendations moving forward, the purpose of this meeting last Monday night was to address those questions. So it was a good, healthy conversation. There are a lot of topics that were covered that we can't encompass just in one memo. But we tried to address a lot of the board's questions. Again, to begin to summarize our condition. A little bit of timeline.
Yeah, this has been a year-long process thus far, asking the question, what is the next best student learning device? Is it still the MacBook or is it something else? So this is just kind of a reminder of where we've been along the way. Back in the, in the spring, we convened with high school staff, kind of a cross-section of teachers from various different disciplines and departments to start asking those questions and decide if the MacBook is still the best device or if we wanted to try something else. And we got a lot of teacher info, several meetings with staff to kind of kick that off. That culminated in a decision to pilot Chromebooks with the freshman class this year. So the freshmen in the fall were given a Chromebook to try and kind of prove out some of our assumptions and give us some more data on how the devices get used, what are curriculum demands, and what the student needs are. And which brings us to now where we are now reviewing one full trimester worth of student use. We sent out staff and student surveys and collected input for how the teacher's experience has been teaching to students using a device and what the student experience has been as well. And so now we are actively involved in reviewing that, diving into questions. That's kind of what's brought us to today.
While we, I believe, I don't know, a few months ago at the end of first try, we did review some of the, the first trimest results. Just a reminder of what's going to keep finding and what we continue to find as we have conversations. Teacher feedback generally is that we've had two major surveys of staff on top of lots of different conversations. But the most recent one did find that of the 54 just teachers we narrowed down to just the teaching faculty at the high school, 50 to 54 stated that they could achieve their learning objectives with either device. And so we, the question was asked that way in particular, which to buy, to promote? We asked one, can you achieve your learning objectives with your students with a MacBook? 50, 54 said yes. Can you do it with a Chromebook? 50 to 54 said yes. And so in those that did not, that followed conversations with those, that the four members of both of them, both of them, conversations yielded back that we believe that determination that they could be with supplementary devices, whether it's Chromebooks, whether it's MacBook, card, iPads, especially in case of students' disabilities. But that overwhelming of our, number of our staff felt that they could achieve their learning objectives with both devices. And taking a look at another aspect along with the looking at the Chromebooks this year, we rolled out ClassWise, which is a program that allows staff to focus students during the class period. So if we want to, very quickly, if we want to say, and students don't listen to this, if we say that running beyond this application or this website for this class period that they can't sort of swing from that to play game or to other things. It's able to focus learning for that class period. That was met with a lot of support from teachers. They, the staff began to discuss the student focus, began to improve with that. It's something that they, they welcome that tool. And then also the student feedback, the students reported no challenges to accessing learning activities in Chromebooks. We do acknowledge that the freshmen, they did not have MacBooks to compare to, but they have been on Mac products all the way through. So students, by and large, acknowledge that they are able to access the learning activities that the staff or teachers are asking them to do. You know, overall, we think it's been a successful pilot. We've got a lot of related information as we begin to get the recommendation that we'll be presenting.
So that leads me to the other areas that I'm all discussing. So this, you've got like five bulletins, so I'm not going to read them all as we're trying here. But some of the highlights of the discussion are also in those notes. I would encourage you to repeat those questions and answers carefully. And my takeaway from the meeting was that I walked away with as many questions as I had answers. This is a big, serious topic. And device aside, we're talking about computer vehicles here for what's best for our students. That's really, that's really what's a hard, that's, that's a hard question to answer with just, do I want this or do I want that? It was way deeper than that. So I really would encourage all board members to be engaged because this is a very high-level curricular decision that's going to impact our district and going to impact our students. We want to make sure we make the right decision. So I would ask all board members to be engaged. Some of the topics in the memo that you might see here is, you know, well, if, we're going to have students on MacBooks or Chromebooks. Sure, teachers, I'm not asking for an answer. I'm going to say that's one of the questions that was posed. You know, will there be a significant change in instructional use of device? That's a deep question. That's not one that you can just answer very quickly. There's a lot of meat on the bone there. Seems like a simple question, but there's a lot more to it than that. You know, and then of course, the financial impact in this year, that was, that's of course always going to be a topic. Whenever we make a range or purchases, it's expensive to run any one of them. And so that's why getting it right is really, really important. I, Rich is going to do next steps and then we'll open up for, are you next steps?
Yeah.
Right? And then we'll open up for the board for questions.
And the last thing on the memo are upcoming next steps. So a week from today, on Monday, February 3rd, we have another joint meeting of our curriculum and technology committees. And at that meeting, administration is planning to present a recommendation for high school student devices. And then at the next regularly scheduled board meeting, which is a week after that, on February 10th, a recommendation we brought to the board for approval regarding the choice of high school student learning devices. Any questions or comments from anybody that was at the meeting?
So I had asked a question that isn't on here about offline access to some of the creativity tools. And so I'm hoping that can get out of here.
Yep, I actually spent time researching that this week, playing around with the Chromebook at my desk. There are tools that replace or mimic or closely imitate what GarageBand and iMovie can do in clinic offline. Was it post immediate from my phone onto a bike, to a Chromebook without wifi and fiddle around with it? Now, those are not loaded by default like GarageBand and iMovie, they're up there automatically. But if a curriculum needed rules for that, if a teacher wanted to do that kind of activity, then yes, we could be done.
Couple of questions. So walk me through ClassWise. That's like the content management system that we use for, teachers would use for what the kids have on their screen.
Yeah, ClassWise is a classroom management tool. So we have something called LineWise, which is the button filter. It says, yes, you can get to educational categories. Yes, you can get to YouTube. No, you cannot go to unmoderated social media. No, you cannot go to illegal gambling sites, that kind of a thing. So we set up those rules in our LineWise. Then this. Then this ClassWise piece is kind of another module from the same company that layers on top of that, it's software to help manage the devices themselves. We give the teacher a dashboard that says, okay, maybe, well, the examples that Jeremy was using earlier is, maybe I don't want YouTube out of my class because it's a distraction. Well, with a couple of clicks, my teacher can eliminate the distraction for that class period. After class, it's open again, evenings for curiosity and research sake, it's open again, but in brief cleaning class time is really helpful. So that's kind of one example, they have some activity with the student devices, so it gives the teacher a couple of tools in their pocket to help manage the devices and students within their classroom.
So we added that this year?
Yes.
What did we use before this year?
We didn't have anything for the 912 levels. K8 used Apple Classroom at the iPads, it has some limitations, it's not Apple's Apple service fee, but it's a best approximation. So teachers in the K through eight grade level, it's a lot of use at Northside and at the middle school, they can focus the students in on certain application, certain website, with some limitations. ClassWise is a better version of that Apple Classroom tool that we were already using K8.
Okay, and then with the addition of Chromebooks this year, does that fall under ClassWise as well? Like you can run Mac, because some classes would have both machines right now, so can you run ClassWise and have Mac and Chromebook?
Yes, you can. You can run ClassWise on the Mac, you can run ClassWise on the Chromebook. There are limitations to what you can do, Apple limits our ability to control different things and get different application usage on here. So you can shut off YouTube, but it doesn't stop a student from opening up a separate application, it's much more effective on the Chromebooks than it is on the MacBooks, but it does work at least internet website wise.
Okay, does Apple have a comparable product to ClassWise, like app for, applicable to like the high school, like the 12 MacBook?
Yes, they also have Apple Classroom at the MacBook level, we worked with their system engineers to get that kind of more robustly deployed in our high school, we've had some teachers using it, but we've had more feedback on ClassWise than on Apple Classroom. The features are better in ClassWise, but there is at least something there for the Macs from Apple directly.
Okay, two more questions. We have Chromebooks that the board could use for a week, just to see what the difference would be.
Yes.
I don't know, just come in and get a baby?
Yep, absolutely.
Okay.
Stop by. We have Dell 3120s that are in our students' hands mostly at the moment, we have one demo unit of Asus model, that has an HD screen and a nicer touchpad, that was a response to student feedback. We tried to get a little bit nicer model so it wouldn't be perceived as quite as much of a difference, so it's a better experience, we do have one of those available, so if you wanted to try it out, absolutely stop by.
It's only more aware of them. It was available.
And then the financial side of it, too big of a question for right now, but maybe I can come in or next Monday, we can cover some of that stuff, but I just had a couple of questions that might, one might need to force to shove that.
Couple of quick things on John's questions, if any board members are interested in stopping by the tech office and getting a device to play with, I'd encourage you to send Neil an email letting him know what time you're coming by, so he can make sure that, if he's not there, we'll have somebody in the tech office ready with that device. And then, John, you mentioned the financial pieces, and I want to highlight that we're not going through the presentation that was shared with the committee, but in the presentation there is information on the vision and purpose of our one-to-one project, some ideas on instructional use that we looked at, some of the pilot staff feedback, and then a couple of slides on costing information, both costing for the district but also costing for families. Jeremy, what's the general feeling among the staff regarding ClassWise and how it works in the classroom and how it helps teaching?
The ClassWise has been very well received by the staff, especially those that have a mix of freshmen and upperclassmen in the classroom, they, that's probably one of the biggest pieces of feedback we received, that they appreciate that, and those that kind of spread, you know, we shared, and then some staff started using right away, that began to grow and grow and grow throughout the first part of the school year. So it's been, it's been well received.
Jeremy, what's the feedback going through the students?
Okay, the students, the feedback we had from freshmen coming back was, one, some questions that, as I mentioned, can you access what these teachers are asking you to? Yes, they can do that. There's feedback from students with regards to, within ClassWise, in some cases, what they wanted to be able to get on YouTube during class period, so maybe there's some topics that came forward to that. Students, some of the feedback that we got from students were about the resolution of the screen and the track pad, there were a lot of comments about that, that led us to look to that, and I can't pronounce it, but not to Asus. Asus, a different model of Chromebook that didn't exist, which we, this model is not available, so a lot of comments about that. And also, one of the things that we learned too is like, students would say that they can't use the NE over the N, well, we, you can in Spanish class, we didn't teach them how to do that. So it highlighted things that we need to do to continue to, to work with our staff or with students, to say that there are some things that might be different, there's a different way to get there, just helping them understand what it's on.
How about the students that are sophomores, juniors, seniors, have they had any input?
We have not had full conversation with them.
That's, that's something I would value, I think student, I think education is a partnership between a student and they've been on these devices for a long time, and they've gone to consider switching, I'd love to hear that, I've expressed that before.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Ed, and thank you, Neil and Jeremy, thank you, everyone, we will, it's work in progress, as they indicated, so we will be back on topic here shortly. Okay, Julia's making her way up, new business A is revisiting a topic that she briefed us a little bit on the previous meeting. This will be discussion and possible action on 25-26 open enrollment space limitations. Go ahead, Julia.
Yep, so I shared a memo with the board, which basically was a quick summary of the presentation that I gave two weeks ago. If I just wanna kind of briefly go through this, so it talks about what the requirements are, if we do set space limitations for open enrollment, and then what our recommendations would be for the ratios, and then on page two, it goes into what the recommendation, what administration would like to recommend. So we would like to recommend that all space remain open for regular ed, open enrollment at all grade levels, and that there will be no limit placed on that for 25-26 school year, but we would also like to recommend that special education programs be applied for the, oop, that says 24, 25, 25, 26 school year, in the spots available on page three into page four. So that is the same grid that you saw in the presentation two weeks ago, nothing has changed there, numbers are all still the same, so just kind of a recap on the last page of where we would have space available, where we would not, OT, PT, deaf and hard of hearing and vision services would all be at capacity. So that was just another line that I added there. The process for how we determine if we have space available, I outlined that for you in the memo, again, I did talk about that two weeks ago, but that's just kind of the process that we use regardless of if we have these space limitations or not. And then we did talk about the policy, I did put that draft policy into presentation, I attached that in the, with the board memo tonight, so again, we'll be looking for action on not just the space limitations, but that language in the draft policy that was highlighted in green. So all of the other language is our current policy, nothing else has changed, except for if we were to go to space limitations, how we would do our waitlist. Now, the one thing that we did reflect on and talk about over the last two weeks is, instead of doing the first come, first served, because Tracy raised a really good point about, okay, what if we have a student who's open enrolled, who then qualifies during the school year for, for having services in the NiP, do they bump the person that's first on the list? So we had great discussions around that with our leadership team at all levels, and we decided to go the random generated list route, which is what a majority of our surrounding districts do, they do this, this language is almost exactly to the majority of our Badger Conference school districts, this is what their language is in their board policy as well. We talked about a lens of equity in terms of folks that can open enroll and fill out the application in the portal the first day versus people not being, knowing how to do that, or needing support doing that, or having technology at home to do that. That question that Tracy raised about, what if a student qualifies mid-year, do they bump the first, the first person on the list? So take away all of that subjectivity and allow equal access to, if we, if we did have a spot available, that it would be randomly generated as to who had that spot. Again, all based on programming, so I don't know that we would meet the needs if they had unique programming, but if we had that space available, that's how we determine who would take that next spot. So that was the change in the recommendation for the policy. So questions or anything that I can help answer before, again, we're looking for action on this topic?
I want to share one thing, because it might be a question that folks have, and we'll get in front of that. With the policy, the board could choose to approve that policy tonight if they want to, but we also, another option would be to add that to our list of policies that the policy committee is looking at on Wednesday, and then we would bring that along with all the other policies to first read at our next board meeting, and then for second read, we'd be at that second board meeting in February. So either of those will work, if, if the board approves, putting the limits on and the changes, those are all for the coming year, so we would need to get the policy in place as soon as possible, but the policy, proposed policy changes mirror what the board would be approving if the board approves the recommendation as listed. So either of those two ways would, would be okay, it's just whatever the board and the policy committee would prefer.
Another question, maybe this is for policy committee, if you can send it to that row. I fully trust you and your belief in what it is, it just makes me a little uncomfortable saying, oh, you can't have services, so make sure you get that right.
Yep.
Should we vote to take, to approve, is there an opportunity if, to review in the future, during like mid-year and said, you know what, we've got, we're gonna allow, we're gonna go against what we approved and?
If there is a change in what our recommended ratios are, that's how space becomes available or not available, so absolutely, I look at those numbers all the time, it's something that we have to set annually. So if we take this next year and, and all of a sudden we have availability within our elementary levels, or we had a lot of students move out, whatever the case may be, we would have those spaces available and the people on the waitlist would be able to get it, absolutely.
I want to share, Ross let me know that we are required actually to have the, any changes to the policy in place before the open enrollment window opens, which is coming up before our next board meeting, so we would need to take action on the proposed changes tonight, and I apologize for not having that script.
No, I see that the ratios, the ratios are not in the policy itself.
No, no, they just have to be reviewed by any January board meeting, the first or second January board meeting, they have to be approved upon. So those would be, they would be reviewed every year, so they could look different next year, let's say our recommended ratios are still recommended, but, but we would look at what our current or our future enrollment would be for the following year and then make those determinations. So we would only, all of the language is exactly the same, that language was in our board policy already, we just didn't access it because we did not have any space limitations.
Got it, thank you.
Yeah.
With these changes, are current students still grandfathered per se?
Yes.
Nothing will change for that?
Correct, and I, I just, if you look at the open enrollment recommendations on the bottom of the last page, I just wanted to reiterate that anybody that is already here are, they're guaranteed a seat for their entire educational career, so we'll just be looking forward to students who we don't already have.
Okay, and then when we do get to capacity per se, and we have to start turning students away, do we get notified of that, or would the board, if, let's just say, you know?
If we have a waitlist.
If we have a waitlist, can we, you know, hey, we're turning people away, like, would we know what that number is and when that's gonna happen?
Yes, we have to keep a running document of who those people are and when they enroll, and I'm gonna work with our open enrollment coordinator, Deana Olson, on a process for that. She has already been in contact with other coordinators who do the same thing around our Badger Conference, so there are processes in place, we'll find what works for us, because I don't know what that number will be, but yes, we will know.
Yeah, and then we can notify the board, let's just say, hey, there's, not every month or whatever, but periodically will we know that, hey, there's three in the list, or five, or eight, or one, or nine?
Sure, yeah, I can give you that date, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
How many other schools in the conference have the restriction, do you know?
All of, all of them in the Badger Conference, in our Badger Conference, yep, all of them have restrictions. I apologize, I don't, I didn't put that in this memo, but I had that in, talked about that in the board presentation two weeks ago, so most have special education and general education limitations, but all have special education limitations. And then I did some more comparative data around like our Rock County area, what do our neighbors kind of look like, all of them have space limitations set, yep, so we would be the only one now that would not.
Procedurally, what's the most concise way to deal with the policy? I think, in the, on the bottom of the memo, it has a recommended motion, and you can see the, before that, the four bullet points are kind of an overview of what as presented means, if the, the motion is to approve the 25-26 open enrollment recommendations as presented, then we would need a separate motion to approve the policy as presented.
And can we do that in one, without a first reading and a second reading?
We can, yes. It wouldn't violate any of our policies. I'm asking for everyone else's benefit, so that we can, we have two tasks on our plate now, obviously. Action on this recommendation would be the first piece, first or second, I don't think it matters which order, and then adopting the policy the way that it's been amended in the green text that was highlighted there for all of us, so everyone's clear. Those are two separate actions that we probably need to accomplish here.
I move to approve the 25-26 open enrollment recommendations as presented.
Second.
John's motion, seconded by Jennifer, to approve the open enrollment adjustments to policy as, limitations are specific to the special ed and not to the general ed as the bullet points indicated there from Julia, so just so everyone's clear. Questions from anyone? So then all in favor of approval of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the updates to policy 5113 as presented.
Second.
Thank you, I was gonna highlight that, and we did, so as chair of the policy committee, you're on top of that, thank you. So Rick's motion is seconded by Jennifer to update policy 5113, as Rick mentioned there in the way that it was highlighted in green for us, those are the changes. Questions from anyone on that? So all in favor of approval of that motion, which amends policy 5113, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Clearly passes. Thank you, Julia. That moves us on to B is second Friday, January count report, and we have Rich and/or Chelsea tag teaming this one, I respect. Yeah, I'll kick things off, and there's two documents that are included in Board Docs, Chelsea has been working hard on getting those numbers, our process is that it really starts with our admin assistance at each of our schools. So on that second Friday in January, as, as required by law, we take that enrollment and make sure that it balances with, the count at the schools balances with the number of students that we have enrolled. So once each of the admin assistants at the schools has, has done that, then they get that information to Chelsea, and Chelsea, if you want to give a quick overview of what you do with that data once you have it?
Well, honestly, I sit and do this when Kim did it, so it was a learning process for me, but we just kind of compiled all the numbers together and filled out a whole lot of paperwork and charts, checking, double checking, triple checking. So I think maybe next time- So I think maybe next time, ask me again and I'll be a little more familiar.
Well, we're fortunate that Kim Cross, who has years of experience with this, was able to come back and do some training on this, because it is the first time that Chelsea has, has done that. And they worked together really closely last week to finalize the numbers. And then, as I said, there's two different documents in Board Docs. The one that is titled, referred to it sometimes as the rainbow shield, it's titled the rainbow shield. So the January 2025 rainbow shield is our current enrollment at each grade level at each school. So that's, that's what is on the count as of that second Friday in January. The other document, the pupil count calculation, is a comparison of those counts with where we were back in the fall. If you recall, the state requires every school district to do a third Friday in September count and a second Friday in January count. And Chelsea, if you open that, the pupil count calculation document, just put it on the screen, a couple of things that I want to note there. You can see again that across the top, all of our different schools, but also our open enrollment out and open enrollment in counts are there. And then down the left side at each grade level, starting with preschool, special ed, and then 4K through 12th grade. And in the grade broken down by different grade levels are going through third grade and then four through six at Northside, and then seventh grade at middle school, and then nine through 12 at the high school. And then on the very bottom line is that total for all of those different groups. On the far right then with the red, the first two columns in the red is the total in buildings. That's our number of students that are actually attending, and that includes both resident and non-resident students. And then the total adjusted head count takes into account our, our resident students, our non-res, open enrolling in and open enrolling out. And then one thing that I want to highlight in both of those columns in comparison to back in September, the total in buildings, and I, you can see that we're 10 bigger in special ed 4K. And that can vary depending on what students are, are asking for services and needing services. But you can see that in, in that area, we have 10. We went from 15 to 25 in our buildings and from 14 to 24 in our adjusted head count. And then I separated out that from the other totals and just looked at 4K through 12th grade. And we had an overall increase of, increase of six students from fall until now in 4K through 12th grade enrollment, with 10 of those, an increase of 10 in our elementary through sixth grade, and a decrease of four at the high school, and then the middle school had stayed stable. And then on the adjusted head count, an increase of 12 at the middle school and high school. Those stayed exactly the same as they were back in the fall. But at 4K through three, it was an increase of seven, and in four, in four through six, an increase of five in the head count. And then in the open enrollment columns, you'll see an increase of four students open enrolling out compared to back in September, and a decrease of four students open enrolling in compared to back in September. Any questions coming to us?
One question back to the rainbow sheet, please. At the high school, there are, there are two lines on the left. One says high school residents, and there's, there's totals. Then one says non-resident open enrollment, and there are totals. And then there are totals, but no description of nine, 11, 14, 36.
That was, I wonder why I take that was.
I think there, there were.
Oh, yeah, no, that is wired, yes.
Okay.
It's listed in the middle school. You can see that third column is, is the wired program. And then that last column for the high school is also the wired program.
Two, two things very mentioning here. As Chelsea shared with us, she's been working with Kim. We're grateful for Kim's tutelage there. She's done this for a long, long time. This is very unique for our district. The administrative assistant does not do the head count in very many districts that I'm aware of. That would typically fall to the business office. So we're, we're grateful for that, and we'll, we'll happily let you gain Kim's insight and wisdom and knowledge from, from years and years of doing that. So, so no worries there. The other thing is, is we just came from Milwaukee, where we interact with districts from all over the place. I often, you know, quite often you'll meet somebody that, you know, they'll say, well, where's Milton? You know, if they're not real familiar geographically, at least, you got to give them a little bit of a, of a map of sorts, whatever like that. And then you give everybody a benchmark. I always call us a 34 or 3500 student school district. And that gives other folks just a benchmark of sorts, because that's what the districts measure each other by for the most part. And, and everything is proportional with budgets and number of staff and, and things like that. So I always use that as, as a bit of a dart at the wall, if you will. And that just helps folks understand who we are and what we are. And I, at one point, and this may change just minimally, we were the 46th largest school district in the state out of 420. So 422, I guess, is actually the right number. That changes a little bit too. Now we lose one, we gain one. Suddenly, there's 420 districts, we're 46th largest. So just gives you a little bit of a benchmark of where we are relative to everybody else, so.
I could just piggyback off of that. I just want to say thank you to Chelsea and Kim, principals, all the people that put in these numbers. This is a lot of work.
Yes, it is.
It seems pretty easy, like just count kids, right? It's not hard to do. There's rules behind how you count them. Think of all the kids around vacation, all the kids who are sick, all the kids that don't show up. It's, it's a lot of work getting an accurate number. And it's an important thing to have an accurate number. And you're looking at counting almost 3500 kids, that's a task. Principals, the rest of us, it's all the hats off, it's all work, thank you for that. And it's easy to read when it's all set up.
Yep. All right. If there are no other questions, we'll move on. Misselainus A is our staffing report, and the updated version is in Board Docs.
I'll move to approve the staffing reports as presented.
Rick's motion is seconded by Matt to approve our staffing report as you see it. Questions from anyone? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That clearly passes. Gifts and donations.
I'll move to approve the gifts and donations with gratitude.
John's motion is seconded by Rick to approve our gifts and donations with our gratitude. Questions? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That clearly passes. Rich, how about meeting dates?
I'll start with our next upcoming regularly scheduled board meeting. It is on Monday, February 10th at 6:30. That's the second Monday in February. And then we have a number of upcoming power, or upcoming committee meetings. Two of them are on this coming Wednesday, January 29th. We have a finance committee meeting at 3:00 PM, followed up by a policy committee meeting at 4:00 PM. So that's on this Wednesday, the 29th, finance at 3:00 and policy at 4:00. On, excuse me, a week from tonight. But we also have two back-to-back committee meetings. On, a week from tonight, on Monday, February 3rd, we start with a joint curriculum and technology committee meeting at 6:30 PM, followed up by an HR committee meeting at 7:30 PM. And then our, we also have a finance committee meeting scheduled between the two February meetings. The folks can make sure they have that on their, their calendar. That is on February 17th at 3:00 PM. So finance committee, February 17th at 3:00 PM.
All right, questions from anyone? All right, we're good on those. And I have a motion on the proposal here that we have an executive session scheduled, so we are not returning to open session tonight. So I want to leave you with another little nugget inspirational wise. And I did not, this, this one I will not give credit for, because this one came from me. And I want you to think about our vision and our purpose, or our mission and vision that I read you at the start of each of our meetings. And one of the integral words in that is community. And I wanted to opine that you cannot spell community without unity, and you cannot spell unity without you and I. So take that with you. As such, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session pursuant to Wisconsin statute 1985 sub 1 and sub C and section 19.82 sub 1, which is considering the employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. Tonight's topics are the superintendent goal setting, I will wrap up, and discussion of superintendent contract extension.
Go move.
Second.
Thank you, that's Rick, and seconded by John. Roll call vote, Ed?
Yes.
And you're voting to go into exec, I should be, not so. And that is, Ed is yes, and Matt?
Yes.
Joe is yes, Rick?
Yes.
And John?
Yes.
And Jennifer?
Yes.
Thank you, we are in executive session. Thank you for joining us, we will see you next.